Thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna call tonight's meeting to order. First is the flag salute. How do we do this?
We can just stand and do it.
Okay. So I'll start it then. I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
For which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Mayor Protam Wall.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
Councilmember Woodard had planned to attend remotely, but I do not yet see him, and I do not see Councilmember Ryan.
Okay, maybe we can, um, when they do arrive, we can note that.
Thank you, that concludes roll call.
Thank you very much. So next will be public comment. Do we have any public comments?
We do have three signed up. First is John Blishmit. You'll have five minutes at the podium.
John Blishmit, 4905 219th Street Southwest, Mount Lake Terrace. Uh, same old stuff I've been griping about for a couple of years. And I've taken a bunch of pictures that the assistant city manager took copies of. I hope you guys look at them. We got, uh, you know, on the news the other day, on one of the TV stations up in Everett, they had a bigger deal with a house that had 11 cars in the front yard. You got one right over there right now that's got probably 12. It's been that way for a while. I want to know why code enforcement and the cops don't do anything about it. Because as I mentioned to you here, I ding this, and it's been there for a couple of years. And on 54th, where you take a right off of 236th or 2nd, whatever it is over here, on the left-hand side, a bunch of cars stacked up against the house, and there's a pile of garbage this high stacked up behind the cars. Why doesn't, they gotta drive by there once in a while, the cops do. They gotta do something when they see it. And if they don't, somebody's gotta kick their butt, and that hasn't happened. Also, I was told that the old Red Onion place, I told about a year ago, oh, it's gonna get cleaned up directly, hadn't been touched yet. And so evidently, you guys know it's supposed to be getting taken care of. Say something to somebody, whoever's in charge of seeing that stuff gets done, because it's not getting done. And what street, I just drove on 66th from 212th up to 220th. You can't go the speed limit on the last two blocks of it. It's that rough. I mean, it's rough. It was just dug up a while back. And whoever put it back together did a pretty poor job. And the inspector, unless there's some unusual reasons, did a pretty bad job of making sure it was smooth. And I finally found out, and it took me almost three months, when one of the code enforcement officers told me, uh, when I asked, there's a house down from mine that's got seven or eight garbage cans spread around out front, but 24/7, 365 days a year. He told me it wasn't his job. Well, I talked to her predecessor, and he talked, he was, it took three or four different meetings, but he finally found out it was his job. Maybe there's a change in job description, I don't know. But it's his job to take care of garbage. And they're putting garbage cans out all along 48th from about, oh, 223rd down almost to 228th. There are places where they've got a parking area marked with a white line about this wide, if you know what I mean. They're supposed to, they're supposed to have right back by the curb. They're putting them out right by that white line. And it's gonna cause trouble, because you can bet your sweet bippy that sometime one of those garbage trucks will stop, and somebody will zip around it, and they're gonna have a little wreck, somebody pulling out or backing out of their driveway, that kind of thing. And I don't know why they don't do their job. Do you, any of you? I guess, I guess you can't answer questions, can you? But they need to, somebody needs to kick their butt and get them going. And why are they, why is code enforcement in the cop shop? This is the only place around that has them there. The rest of the places have them, like in this building, in the City Hall building. And, and code enforcement doesn't give parking tickets in the other cities unless it's a license plate that's expired or the rig's been parked there for a long time. So I was told by a person in a neighboring city. But our cops don't give tickets, because I was told by a former employee that was really good, you guys must miss her. Knew she, every time I asked her something, she had the answer. If she didn't, she found out and called me. And she told me that the chief of police said that wasn't a priority to give tickets. Well, it looks like they should make it a priority. I can show you probably 150 of them parked illegally between here, 44th and 216th. And I, and maybe you can find out, the Red Onion thing. I know one of you up there told me it was supposed to get cleaned up directly. That's been about a year ago. Things don't get done. And I don't know who's supposed to kick butt, but they better start kicking. I mean, the right hand, what the right hand's doing. Okay, thanks for listening to my gripes. But something's gotta get done.
So can I just jump in here? Rick Ryan, oh, there he is. He got, he got his link. He was trying to get in earlier. Okay, you can continue with the public comments.
Next is Sean Walsh. You'll have five minutes at the podium.
Hi, my name is Sean Walsh from 21703 51st Avenue West. I'm here with three of my neighbors, and there's a couple of other neighbors that couldn't make it tonight. I'm here to start a relationship with the new city manager. And this is the first time I've brought these issues to the city council, which is basically a nuisance and drug, a lot of drug activity in a couple of houses on our street, 217, or 51st Avenue West. So, been going on for decades. We, uh, my neighbors and I initiated a petition to the city manager on, in 2020 with over 30 residents signed it. This got the attention of the city manager. Code enforcement had been engaged several times. They'd, they'd basically exhausted all their remedies they had for issuing citations, not getting any results. Finally, the city did an abatement, I believe it was March of last year, and cleared the property, amazing clearance of this property. Was a great job. But the, the person there, the main person there that like, kinda meth, meth-using woman that lives there at one of the properties, basically just started, moved her operation into the shed that was constructed on the side of the house. So I pursued that, because it was an illegal structure. She had built it into a habitation that was one of the things that were cleared from the other side of the house. So I engaged the building department with that. It took a long time, but they finally abated that, May 31st, which was great. But this woman, Jolene, reconstructed that structure in the same location with tarps, started building it the same night, and it's erected again. So it's total, like, the thing that the city took a year to get other ducks in a row with the city attorney and get, you know, make sure everything was legal, and then abate, uh, three weeks ago, is reconstructed within a couple of days. Same thing exists there. So we had relation, and the other house next door, there's a lot of drug activity, a lot of crime associated with it. People living in tents in the backyard, reeking of urine, because people have been living in tents for years back there. We've been told that the city doesn't yet have a code for people living in tents and backyards, but, and, and I don't know, I've been told that there's priorities, and they can't tell me where that is in the priority of dealing with that issue. So we would really like to get the new city manager on board with us, engage with us, study the history of it with the, the petition that we got together with like, almost everybody on the street that's affected. And, because what Scott Hugel had told us was that if, if the city, if it continues to be issues, in spite of every remedy the city has to, to address the issues, that it's possible that they might be able to shut the house down like, for a year, and make it so that you can't live in that house for a year. So, I mean, it's, the, there's a huge history of police actions at the, at the properties. The police, you know, they, we keep getting told, code enforcement is like exhausted all the remedies that they could do. They're like, don't want to take calls anymore, because it's the same thing over and over again. They keep telling us to call 9/11. You call 9/11, police get on the phone and call you up, go, what's the problem? Well, it's the same, it should be documented. It's the same problem over and over again. Get kinda tired of having to explain it over and over again. So that's our, that's what we've come here, we'd like to kind of, you know, Scott Hugel, when I first came to him, we were saying we wanted to come to the city manager, city council, and speak to you. He said, hey, listen, I work at the pleasure of the city council. I don't want to lose my job, so just keep it with me and let me deal with it. And he, we had a pretty good relationship going there. I don't know what happened to him. I hope he's okay. No one's been able to tell me that. But we would like to kind of like, get the attention of the city council. Hopefully, the city council can be involved in helping us remedy the situation on that street. It's been going on for so long. And also, the city, the city manager, maybe we can have a meeting with him and building department, code enforcement, police, and see what remedies we can, or what we can do going forward, so. Thank you for giving me the time. Heidi, would you like to speak? Heidi, like Heidi and my other neighbor are more affected by the other house, which is, has more drug activity. I'm on the side of the initial house and.
Your five minutes is up.
Yeah, so.
Okay, there's no one else, no one in the online audience, so that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. All right, so then we'll move on to the consent calendar. Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve the consent calendar items A through E.
Second.
Second. Nope, you already seconded.
All right.
Yes, we've had two seconds. So it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And next is the review and approval of our boards and commissions. And who is gonna give that report?
I will, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and Mayor Protam, members of the city council. Last, June 13th and 14th, council, the subcommittee.
Jeff. We can't hear you.
Interviews for various, yep.
You're, for some reason, you're crackling, fading in and out.
Hmm.
We can hear you now.
Is this better?
Yes.
Okay. So on June 13th and 14th, the Mayor, Mayor Protam, and Councilmember Murray, who are the subcommittee that interviews board and commission. This thing's not working well at all. Interviews board and commission applicants, conducted 22 interviews with various people throughout the community that are interested in serving on different communities, or different commissions, boards and commissions for the city, and volunteer for the bedroom of their community. And we appreciate each and every person that put their application in to be considered. There are several appointments that are recommended for approval by the full council this evening. And I'll run through those one by one here. For effective July 1st, 2023, the, for the Arts Advisory Commission, the subcommittee recommends Bonnie Mercer, who is currently a member and is seeking reappointment. And the second recommendation for arts is Janie Hoff, who would be a new appointment. And I think I'll stop after each commission and ask if the city council has any questions about these, these recommendations.
Did you ask for clarification? Where's the mayor? I'm waving at her, but she can't see me. Sorry, I'm looking at you on my screen, so I don't expect you to see me. Can I just ask for clarification? You're gonna stop after each group or all of them together? Because my only question was, how many did we have for each one?
Oh, okay, so for the Arts Advisory Commission, there were two openings. And those two openings are for, again, Bonnie Mercer, who is a reappointment, currently serving on the Arts Commission, and Janie Hoff, who is a new appointment. And I thought I would stop after each board or commission to see if council had any questions.
I don't know if you can see us shaking our heads, no.
I can't see you shaking your heads, but I'll take, I'll take.
You guys are so small.
Yeah.
I'll take the silence to me, and I can go ahead and move forward. So for the second commission, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission, there are actually five seats open. However, we had four applicants, so we will have a seat open. And the plan is to work on the charter and the strategic plan for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission, and then go out and seek that, that final appointment to make it a full committee. So for the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission, it's a three-year term that will expire June 30th of 2026. And the recommendations are Kerem Onet, I believe I'm pronouncing that correctly, Kermit Appio, Teresa Courtney, and Scott Matsuda. And I'll pause here to see if there are any questions. Okay. And the next commission is the Planning Commission. And this is a four-year term that expires June 30th of 2027. There were three openings on the Planning Commission. And the three recommendations are Isaac Harrison, Jenna Stenson, and Steve Landis. See if there's no questions there.
How many applied?
For Planning Commission, I believe there was 11. That was a pretty competitive, pretty, pretty competitive process. And finally, for the Recreation Park Advisory Commission, this is for a three-year term expiring June 30th, 2026. There are four positions that are open. And the first two are reappointments, so currently serving on the Recreation and Park Advisory Commission. Molly Luna, Alana Namy, Namy, I believe is, and I'm probably pronouncing that wrong, but that's the recommendation there. And then two new appointments for Ellen Lavoy and Forest Rita. And that concludes the report. I'm happy to answer any questions on the Recreation Parks Advisory Commission or any of the, the recommendations as part of this report.
I don't see any hands going up. It's hard to see.
Yeah, it is.
All right, so I guess, so do we vote on, because I don't have my, I have handwritten agenda here.
No.
So are we voting, are we gonna make a motion to vote on, oh, go ahead, Mayor Protam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move, to put something on the table to vote on, I'll move to approve the city council subcommittee's recommendation as presented.
Second.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded, and do we have discussion? If no discussion, is that a hand? Okay.
It's not a discussion, but I, I just wanted to point out too that we're losing some people that have been on commissions for years, like Annie Nygaard, who's been on the Arts Commission and on a board for many, many years, and Manuel, and Isaac, who've been on the Planning Commission for many, many years. And then on the Parks Department that I serve on, Noah has left, and so we're very sad about that. So I'm hoping that we could send out letters to them, thanking them for their service, or having them come to a meeting so we can publicly recognize their service on the boards for so long, because we do appreciate everything that they've done for the city. And that's, that was just a comment, it wasn't any debate.
I think Isaac has been reappointed.
Yes.
Oh, um, oh, yes, Harrison, you're right. It was, I thought, it was you, Rory, was the other one. Sorry, I did say Isaac, and I see underneath it was just him. So it was Manuel.
Miguel has served a long time.
Yes. I love his wife, she works in our community, and they're just wonderful couples. So I just want to thank him for his service as well.
Okay, I see a hand up with Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to say the same thing. I absolutely agree with what I'm hearing. I actually wanted to expand that to everyone and acknowledge Commissioner Nygaard, Commissioner Mahunder, Commissioner Dean, Commissioner Doyle, Commissioner Williams, Commissioner Meyer, Commissioner Sandoval, and Commissioner Canoldo for this, the hard work they've all put in, whether it was for the three-year term or much longer. You all have really had an impact on this city, and we thank you for that.
Thank you, anyone else?
Mayor, can I?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I would echo the appreciation that was already expressed to all of our commissioners who are, whose terms are ending here at the end of June, and just, you know, my gratitude for, for all that you've accomplished. And I would just name, as somebody, as one of the council members who participated in the interview process, I think we say this every time we do interviews. One, we have a phenomenal community, and I am just, I'm so excited about the future of Mount Lake Terrace, because we continue to have just absolutely high-quality, amazing folks step forward and raise their hands to volunteer to make our community better. And I'm incredibly grateful for that. We had, it was a lengthy conversation to get to a place of, of these recommendations to the council, because there was, there was amazing folks who ultimately we didn't have space for, and would just, I, I know the mayor and Mayor Protam will give this, the Mayor Protam gave this, I think, you know, guidance to folks very eloquently as we were going through the process, but would love to ensure that we continue to see those folks show up. Our commission meetings are open to the public, our council meetings are open to the public. We have numerous activities coming up over the summer and moving forward this year where volunteers are welcome and needed, and just hope to continue to see all of you and have a chance to get to know you better. And as other opportunities open up in the future, have the chance to revisit some of those conversations, because again, the field of applicants was just phenomenal. So I wanted to say thank you to all of the folks who raised their hands, and our gratitude, both to those who are appointed and those who are not.
Mayor, briefly, I'll chime in and
All right.
Add my, my appreciation for, for those who've served and those who are continuing on, who've been reappointed. And just point out that all four of these, these commissions will have some, some very important and weighty work before them in their coming term. So, you know, for those who were not appointed, I'd encourage you to continue to, to pay attention and to, you know, engage where, where you, where you see opportunity to. And I hope, you know, for the sake of, of the community, we, we have some strong engagement on the comp plan update, on many of the, the parks and arts initiatives, and our DEI initiatives as well. So I'll stop there, thank you.
Thank you. So I think I don't see anyone else's hand. So then we're on to the vote. So I'm gonna call, so, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, we have a whole bunch of new, wonderful boards and commission members. All right, so next is the city manager's report.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor Protam, members of council. Just a couple of things to mention tonight. The first is, we have secured our booth for Tour de Terrace, and we'll have members of the leadership team out there to interact with folks as they come through. We'll be at booth 55, so come see us. Next, we do have a date for the next Terrace Talk and the new newsletter that's going out, that's gonna be held in September. They're in the council chamber, September 13th. And that will be a hybrid meeting, so we'll have an opportunity there to interact with the community and answer questions as well. And then finally, there is a Chamber of Commerce, the Mount Lake Terrace Brighter Chamber of Commerce networking event on June 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Zeeks. And looking forward to interacting with the community there as well. And that's all I have for you. I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Are there any questions?
Mayor, I did have a quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, sorry. I was gonna say, a little, not, not intending to talk over you. Jeff, thank you for the report. A quick question about Tour de Terrace booth. Is there, I guess, opportunity and/or space for, for council to come and join city leadership at the booth at Tour de Terrace?
Absolutely. We would welcome council members to come by and, and interact with us and interact with the community and help us answer questions.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Ryan? Uh-oh, we can't hear you. Oh, what? Put your, put your finger on the spacebar and keep it down. Oh, that didn't work. Huh. What else can we try? Oh, no. Is your volume all the way up? No, we still can't hear you.
Your speaker just turned red when you touched something, Rick, just a second ago. The little icon, now it, it's off. That's.
Yeah.
It should be on.
Yeah.
And it was working earlier, because I heard his vote for the board and commission appointments.
And, yeah. Can you, can you write it down? And, and is there a chat feature? No.
Read lips, something about Tour de Terrace?
I can't. Are you telling us that? Well, we still can't hear you, Rick. I was gonna say, if you would text it to one of us, we can read it. Okay, we'll, we'll go on to someone else. Text it, text it to our city manager. All right. Okay, I'm sorry, I can't remember where we were. So we were at the, um, the Council liaison reports?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so then we'll, we'll start with, um, Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. On June 8th, I attended the Economic Alliance of Snohomish Counties' Public Officials Reception and Legislative Wrap-Up. I was held up in Everett and was a great opportunity to go down and see all of the nice, uh, development down on their waterfront, um, hear from some of our elected officials, uh, who represent our county down in Olympia. Uh, and the work that they did, the largely, they had a large focus on the bipartisan work that they did down in Olympia here this last session. Um, and I thought that was a really helpful, um, informative session and a good opportunity to, to network with others, uh, from around our county. So appreciated that opportunity. On the 12th, um, joined, uh, several members of the council as well as our city manager at our American Legion meeting here at the VFW. Uh, appreciation to Councilmember Woodard, uh, for, um, making that connection uh, and then inviting us to go with. It was a really nice opportunity to learn more about the benefits that they offer and the services, uh, that they offer to our veterans. Um, and so we talked about opportunities to partnership. I think they're going to come share some of the, the good work that they do with the, the council here in the near future as well as with the community so that we can help them to connect with folks who might be interested or in need of those services. Um, so that was a really, really great meeting and opportunity. Um, the next day, the 13th and 14th, uh, we had boards and commissions interviews. Those, again, we had a lot of interest, so very full evenings of, of interviews with our, uh, amazing folks from our community. And we've talked about that, so I won't, uh, linger there. On the 15th, we had, uh, a council orientation, uh, for our three newest council members, uh, some of whom have been here a little while, but it was a great opportunity to, to, I think, re-ground in kind of foundations around, um, council service uh, and appreciate city staff for, for refreshing some of our materials there and ensuring that we're set up for success as council members. Uh, then I had my city manager meeting later that day. And then I came back a third time that day for our work session. It's my first three, three times to City Hall in one day, uh, day. So that was a, a busy one. Um, and I think that that completes my report for this meeting. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Next will be Councilmember Rep. Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a light report this, this week. Um, I attended the council orientation that the city manager provided. Um, and that's, that's the extent of, of my report for the last period here. But I do want to also express my appreciation to Councilmember Woodard for the, the Legion outreach. I, I unfortunately missed that opportunity, but plan on following up with, with them for, for more engagement. With that, I'll stop there.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Salmore?
Thank you. Um, I'll start my report, but I want to start my report off with two very important things. First, I want to thank, um, we, our new deputy city manager, Ms. Hope, for joining our city. I just want to say thank you for joining our city and being here with us. And the other extremely important news, well, he was there a minute ago. There he is, Councilman Ryan's retirement and his dedication to serving children, uh, for his career. So thank you to the both of you for your new career changes. And then, um, with my boards, the Finance Committee, Committee, Meeting was canceled. However, we did sign off on our, um, finances that we do every two weeks. And then, um, one side note, which is a city function, was the American Legion. And again, thank you to Councilman Woodard for inviting us on the 12th. Um, the American Legion is located on 56 and there is room rentals for anybody who is interested. Um, it's a lovely place to have an event. And I encourage veterans and people in the military, um, to go to a meeting. Um, I had an absolutely wonderful time. It was fantastic. So I appreciate them hosting us. And then to further, um, board reports, I also serve on the Park and Rec Commission and we met on June 13th. And, um, it was a treat to attend this meeting as well. We didn't know it was our president's last meeting. I wish we had known. We all thought he was going to reapply. But, um, we did have two guests come in and it was so refreshing to have, um, one of the residents wanted to build toy boxes for Candy King Park. And then she also wants to add artwork to the fence along, um, 48th at Candy King Park. So, um, Councilman Ryan, if you could tell the president of our Arts Commission that she'd like to meet with her. Um, she's got some great ideas, but I think also our art board could help her with some ideas too. And then we also had a gentleman come in who talked about planting trees at Lake Ballenger that he'd like to help with, but also getting, um, a tent or something set up on the lake that people can view the birds on. So it was nice to see that they came in with ideas to share with our, um, board. So that was very, very nice. And then another update on another board is left one. So there'll be a big change to that board where the fire claims will be going away and we believe it will be going away in August. So that will be a big change there. And then, um, I just wanted to point out too, I'd like to add, and ask the city manager, and I know our city attorney's on the phone and our new deputy city, um, manager is also with us tonight. But if we could have the abatements and, um, the nuisance put back on an upcoming meeting so we can go over that again. Um, it was talked about, the one year, um, of not allowing people in the houses. And if you could refresh us on that, um, that would be greatly appreciated. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. I will go on to Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I'm having issues with my volume and all that. Uh, if this gets too loud, just let me know and I'll cut it off and we'll do it another day. Uh, Wednesday, the 7th, I participated in Seattle City Clubs. Uh, basically they do an evening event and this one was on accessibility and higher ed. That was a great evening. I knew most of the panel, it was good work. Uh, on the 8th, I participated in, uh, can you hear that or is that just me? You just hear me?
We can hear you well.
I can hear you.
Okay, you don't hear that background. Okay, great. On the 8th, uh, I had the opportunity to go to the United Way of Snohomish County's Luncheon. I say that to say that we now have a Dolly Parton Imagination Library. Uh, so I would pass that on to our residents. That's a wonderful opportunity to get free books for your young ones. We know that reading is literally the deal breaker, uh, early on in life. If you are not up to speed with your reading level, you get left behind very quickly. Uh, on the 8th, that same day, I too participated in the EA, uh, Economic Alliance's, uh, Public Official Reception. A very lovely reception. It was awesome. Uh, the next day, I had the opportunity to go to the Affordable Housing Conference put on by H C E S C. Uh, just a full day of thinking about how do we, uh, serve our residents. An amazing, uh, conference, as was depressing on some levels, but also raise of hope of what we can do about it. Uh, that next day, I was a fundraiser actually with the Aqua Sox and I only use that one to say Ivy League showed up, uh, which appreciated. That was a food bank, um, fundraiser. And so we were able to help out our communities that way. And I swear, you better not be able to hear what's going on around me. I hope you're not having to put up with that. You can only hear me. Uh, that said, on the 12th, thank you all for joining me with the American Legion gathering. I appreciate that you all thought that was a good use of our time. Uh, I definitely agree with you. Uh, the next day, uh, with the school board, I went to what was called an on-the-job training internship. The Foundation for Edmund School Districts, I'd had a pilot program to put students into internships. Just another way to connect them to the learning process. And it was amazing. They had, I want to say five graduates and, uh, we'll do it again next year. Uh, on the 14th, the next day, uh, we had our, uh, board meeting for the foundation. But I do that to let you know that we had a living legends opportunity we can, I've, um, brought back to life, if you will. Uh, now that's a horrible use of terms. They're already alive. Living legends, we brought the program back, uh, back online and we honored three people in particular, uh, that you might recognize. All of them from Mount Lake Terrace. Uh, Fred Scholl, Frank DeMero, and Kim Wilson. Those three gentlemen have done so much for this community through music and the arts and, and sports, uh, that we owe them a big thank you. Just wanted to let you know that the foundation did honor them as living legends. Uh, the next day, the 15th, I went on to the Shoreline State of the City and then doubled back to my orientation. Uh, four and a half years in, I got oriented. Thank you. I'm teasing a little bit there. It was really good information. I appreciate that. Uh, the next day, on the 16th, I joined the county for the Juneteenth Flag Raising with Executive Summers. Uh, that next day, the 17th, Ivy League celebrated two years of, uh, adopting a park. And then I also had the honor of representing us at both Edmund Collin, Edmund's College Graduations. Uh, and then yesterday, at the 19th, I went to the Nubian Jam, excuse me, uh, Juneteenth put on by Verdant and the City of Lynwood. Uh, they would love to have the City of Mount Lake Terrace step in. They talked to our DEI about that, but that was a lot of fun. Uh, I tabled for the Nubian Jam. And then last but not least, uh, let's see, what does that say? Oh, just today, we met with the, uh, Lake Ballenger McAllier Creek Forum. Uh, and the biggest news there is, uh, on a vote of three to one, with Edmund's being the ones that say no, uh, we voted to let the ILA lapse, meaning that we are not going to pursue renewing it. And there's a lot around that, which, if you're interested in that information, we can go into that deeper another time. And that would be the end of my report.
Thank you. Okay, um, I don't know if, if we can even ask Rick to give a report seeing that we can't get his, um, so we'll just move on to Mayor Protem Brian Wall.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, real quickly, on the 8th, also attended the Economic Alliance, uh, Public Officials, uh, Reception and Meeting. That was, uh, that was great. And then on the 13th and 14th, had our, uh, it, Board and Commission Interviews. And, and on the 15th, had a work session. Going back to the Board and Commission Interviews, I, I, uh, I, I also want to echo the incredible talent we have in our community that, and, and willingness of so many great people to get involved. And, um, and, I mean, some, the Subcommittee was so impressed with everybody that was interviewed, put their name forward and disappointed that we couldn't find a position on one of the boards for everyone. Uh, but we did have a great discussion about some ideas of how to make sure we can get these, keep these folks engaged. And so we look forward to, uh, bringing some of those ideas forward to the rest of you uh, when we are able to give, make them a little more concrete. But, but a lot of great ideas and I'm excited about the, the potential for how we might be able to move forward and making sure there's a, a place for everyone that wants to be involved in the city, make sure there's a place for them to get involved. Uh, so that concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so for my report, I just wanted to, um, report that on the 7th of June, I attended the, um, Snohomish County Mayors. Uh, this is the South County Mayors, um, South Snohomish County Mayors, um, meeting. And this time we met in person at, uh, Briar Pizza. And hopefully we'll start, um, doing that more often, uh, in various cities. And then, um, on that night and two other nights, uh, I did, um, the Boards and Commission Interviews, over 20 of those interviews. And then on the 8th of, um, June, I attended the Economic Alliance, uh, Public Officials Reception with the others. And on the 9th, I also attended the Housing Consortium, um, Conference on Housing, uh, in, um, Everett. And we're getting a lot of, a lot of great ideas. And I, I agree with, um, Councilmember Woodard that some of it is very frustrating. Um, and hopefully we can get some of these ideas, um, working, uh, in the future. But it, it, it takes a lot of people and a, and a lot of, um, just, just do it attitude. And then on the 14th, I attended the Executive and Mayor's Meeting. And then on, and then, um, I guess I was the first one that the Northwest News Radio, uh, decided to interview as their new segment that they're doing. And so I, I got interviewed, um, for about five minutes and I've not heard the interview yet, haven't been able to find it. So, um, anyways, when we do find it, we'll share it. And then on the 15th, I also attended the Shoreline State of the City, um, Breakfast. And, um, I look forward to having one in Mount Lake Terrace too. And on the 16th, I attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony over in Lynwood for the Sound Transit Garage that they, uh, now have. And, um, and, and also, uh, Community Transit was there and I'm on the Community Transit Board, so. It's a great garage, but I did get lost in it. All right. And so next, that's the end of my report. And so next is new business. Does anyone have any new business? If your hands are up, I don't see any up.
I had a quick one, if you don't mind. I just wanted to make, thank you. I just wanted to make sure you all were invited Friday, uh, in Smokey Point or Arlington. Depending on your perspective, VOA has a open house and tour of our distribution center. If you wanted to come check that out, it's an amazing resource here in the county. I, I can send you details if you haven't have, if you don't have it already. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, I'd just like to jump in and, and, uh,
Okay.
Ditto Councilmember Sanmore's, uh, request that we have a, a, an update on abatement practices and, um, anything else the, the city manager and deputy city manager might be able to share back to us. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sure he's already written those notes. All right, anyone else? I don't see, uh, it's really hard to be from here looking at these teeny little. All right. Um, so Rick, you haven't, um, been able to do anything.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
God, what did you do?
I just pushed a button.
Okay, we can hear you. Did you want to give your?
Oh, no. Now I gotta talk.
What were you, what were you saying before?
Okay, uh, I, I pushed a button. Sorry, it's, uh, I can't tell you the computer I'm using because I might get, um, in trouble. But anyway, um, now you're making me look at the calendar. Oh, I had a left one on the 13th. And, uh, of course, our, uh, meeting on the 15th. And that's it. Now, not showing up because, uh, got lots of sneezing and coughing going on and I don't want to spread it to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, um, I don't see any other hands going up. And so if that is the case, I am going to adjourn the meeting. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Record.